Guys, ready?
Yes.
I'm going to call the June 17th meeting of the West Des Moines City Council to order and invite you all to stand to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Please sign in.
Four members present.
Ryan, have there been any changes to the agenda?
No changes, Your Honor.
Yeah, we take a motion to approve the agenda as distributed.
Motion approved.
Second.
Yes, and moving seconded, please vote.
Four yes.
Okay, item two, Citizens Forum. Anybody that would like to address the Council on Citizens Forum, anything that is either not part of public hearings or new business, please come to the podium here, give us your name and address for the record. We ask that you keep it to five minutes or less and that you keep it civil and respectful. Megan?
Good evening, I'm Megan Guns. Do you need address?
Yes, please.
1204 64th Street in West Des Moines, Iowa.
Thank you, Megan.
I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Megan Guns and I am running for Dallas County Attorney. I am an 18-year resident of West Des Moines, 15 years living in Dallas County. I am currently a prosecutor in the Polk County Attorney's Office, have been for the last seven years prosecuting homicides, sex abuse, major offenses, including human trafficking. But before that, I was in the Dallas County Attorney's Office for seven years. So I've been prosecuting for 14 years. And I have a couple of things that I want to ensure as the next county attorney, first and foremost, that our citizens are kept safe with a prosecutor with a lot of experience, to ensure that as the county continues to grow, that you have a prosecutor representing you who has experience and is going to make sure that they put seeking justice over politics. The other aspect is I want to ensure that we, ensure that we have resources for mental health and substance abuse through the use of drug courts and mental health courts. Those have been proven to be very successful in the venues and jurisdictions that have those. And they engage in some really intensive therapies to ensure that recidivism rates are decreased for nonviolent offenders. But when it comes to those people who are committing violent offenses, I want to make sure that you have an experienced prosecutor taking care of you. So, won't take up any more of your time, but I just wanted to introduce myself and thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Megan, for being here and for putting your name in the hat. We know, all of us know up here what it takes to do that, and we appreciate you stepping up and your willingness to serve, so.
Thank you.
Okay, Terry?
Yeah, I'm Terry Gray, 1641 South 35th Street, West Des Moines. Had a stormwater issue recently. The drainage ditch just takes forever to soak in. Russ and a few other people have visited with me about it. I am having trouble finding answers. I need to know where to go to get answers on when the Thornwood area was annexed and when the culverts were installed for my property, which was built in 89, and my neighbor's property, which was also late 80s, whether those culverts were inspected. Hopefully, those are easy things to find out. I have no idea where to find them.
Well, you know, we can continue to try to work with you and find those, the answers to those questions that you pose. I mean, I think Thornwood was developed quite, quite a few years ago, but we can work with Brian and his department to try to figure that out. I think you got the email, though, that Brian sent regarding the issue that is causing the backup and the flooding, right?
Yes.
With your neighbor's property and, I don't know if you've gone over and talked to your neighbor?
Yes, I have.
Okay. Because I, I think our engineers believe that if the neighbor is willing to fix his culvert that goes underneath his driveway, if you guys can figure out a solution to that, that that should take care of the issue mainly. I don't know that all this research on the history of the drainage in the area is going to help, but we're certainly willing to try to find the answers to those.
He doesn't believe it should be all his financial responsibility. We pay the same tax rate as a property that has curb and gutter. If there's an issue on the city right of way with curb and gutter, the city comes in and replaces it, repairs it. Am I right or wrong on that?
You know, this, this is a rural cross-section with a drainage ditch in it, and I think that that is something that you need to maintain. I don't know that, that this is a city issue. If it was, then when we were out there, the engineers would have indicated as such. I think this is more of a private property issue between you and your neighbor. But we can get together, Terry, afterwards, and we can have a discussion about this and try to research the answers to your questions further.
I would appreciate that very much because his first estimate was outrageous. It was over $30,000 for the driveway approach and to dress up his driveway. And there's no way he should have to pay that when we're paying the same rate, so.
Okay, sounds good. We'll get together, Terry. Appreciate you being here. Okay, anybody else for Citizens Forum? Okay, seeing and hearing no one. Let me go online. Is there anybody online that would like to address the Council on Citizens Forum? Please hit star six to unmute yourself if there is. Give us your name and address for the record. Again, star six, not pound six. Is there anybody online that would like to address the Council on Citizens Forum?
Hello?
I figured.
Hello?
Amy, how you doing, Amy? We hear you. Why don't you give us your name and address for the record, please? And you've got five minutes.
My name is National Public Corruption Whistleblower, and I'm having to call on a undisclosed telephone line because my other telephone number you guys have blocked. I didn't really have anything to say today, but I just wanted to check to see if you blocked me, and sure enough, you did. I'm on Mill Civic Parkway. I am getting harassed by the city of West Des Moines, death threats, all kinds of things because the city of West Des Moines wants to steal my property. But I will add that I talked to some neighbors to the west, and they haven't received any mail from you guys saying that you're going to do any construction for them. So are you mailing, mail tampering with them too, like you did me?
Amy, you've got a lot of allegations you're throwing around here, none of which I think are true, but...
No, they're not allegations. They're truth, okay? If it's an allegation, I'll say it's an allegation. This is truth.
Okay.
That's all I got to say.
Okay.
Have a good day.
Take care, Amy, you as well. Anybody else online for Citizens Forum? Okay, hearing no one. Citizens Forum is closed. We're going to move on to item three, Mayor Council Manager Report, Other Entities Update. And we will start out this time with item 3A, which is a Comprehensive Safety Action Plan. And we will hear from the Des Moines Area Metropolitan Planning Organization.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me. My name's Brian Wilhelm. I'm with HR Green, and I am on the consultant team, working for the MPO, putting together the Comprehensive Safety Action Plan. And so tonight, just wanted to give you an update of what that project is and kind of what to expect over the next few months as we move through it. This project is being funded through something called the Safe Streets and Roads for All, federal grant program that's been around for two or three years now. And so this map just gives you an idea of the different communities and groups that receive funding through the, through the 2023 award cycle. Our study area is essentially, well, it is, it's, it's the MPO boundary. And that does include, you know, the fairly recent change now with the MPO boundary encompassing, you know, the entirety of Polk County. So this, this study will, you know, look at both the urban areas and the rural areas that are kind of out in the county, too. So really, the purpose of this project and the purpose of the, of the federal funding program that was put together is to really study and look at and reduce fatal crashes, traffic crashes, and crashes that result in serious injuries. So that's what we're really trying to, to address with this particular study and this funding program. Just some bullets here on what one of these comprehensive safety action plans are. So again, we're, we're focusing on the fatal and serious injury crashes. So we're taking a look at lots of the crash data, risk factors. We're, we're going to take all of that data and really try to hone in on some of the hotspots and where are these particular types of crashes really happening throughout the metro? And then once we have an idea of that, then we'll be coming up with some, some countermeasures or some improvements to address those specific types of, of crashes, once we dig into, you know, what's really, what's really going on there. And then ultimately, another part of this, of this federal funding program is implementation funds also. So if you want to apply for the implementation funds, you have to go through this first step and do this official Comprehensive Safety Action Plan, which is what we're doing now, that'll set us up to be able to apply for additional funding later for the actual improvements. This is just giving you an idea of sort of the eight standard things that go into each and every one of these comprehensive safety action plans that are being done. Safety analysis, like I mentioned, it takes a look at equity, and it looks at policy, and ultimately, you know, looking at, you know, again, what projects can really be identified based on what's, what's going on on our streets. When it comes to the project goal, and so that's essentially the, the stated goals that'll come out of the actual safety plan. Some communities talk about eliminating, like fully eliminating serious injuries and fatal injuries. Some are more comfortable with just, you know, committing to a significant reduction in those. And then there's different target years we can talk about, too. And so, you know, this particular goal will be something that the region as a whole comes together on and decides is, is good for the, the Des Moines Metro. So this is something that we'll be continuing to talk about as we go through the process, too. Why do we, you know, need to be talking about this stuff? As you can see, and you're probably aware, the numbers continue to be really bad, just for the number of lives lost on, on U.S. roadways, you know, throughout the, throughout the years. So it's still a major problem, and that's, that's again why the federal government decided to create this specific funding program, just to try to, try to affect these numbers. Now, these, these next numbers are our actual study area, so Des Moines Metro numbers, and our study periods from 2018 to 2022, so a five-year time period. And you can see, you know, out of the more than 50,000 total crashes, over 900 of those include someone who is either killed or seriously injured. And so the, this, these are the types of crashes we're really talking about and honing in on. And on the right, you can just see that's sort of the, the breakdown of types of crashes that are happening. So not surprisingly, you know, over half are involving vehicles, but there's still, there's still quite a few that are involving motorcycles, pedestrians, and bicycles, too. So this plan will be trying to take a look at, you know, all modes of traffic, what we can do for, for different improvements just across the board. These next couple slides, as the data team has started to go through, you know, that, that big data set that I just mentioned, these are just some of the trends that they're starting to see come out of it. So in the, the more rural areas, a lot of times that includes higher speeds and things. They're having a higher percent of serious crashes. Single-vehicle crashes were about half of what we're talking about. The crashes involving motorcycles and pedestrians, you know, just because of the nature of them being more unprotected, they do have a higher likelihood of, of leading to one of these types of crashes we're talking about. When you see the VRU in these bullets, that just stands for vulnerable road user, so pedestrians, bicycles, motorcyclists. And this just gives you an idea of where some of those are occurring in the metro area. Speeding, failure to yield, that's, that's always, you know, a big one. And in this case, too, those, those two are really the top major causes in what's happening, especially in the, in the urban areas of the metro. And then males were involved in over half of these types of crashes, and younger drivers were involved in about 20% of them. So just some, some high-level data that's starting to come out of the data set. So just a couple slides here, just to let you know kind of how this process is working and where we are. So we're in this, sort of the third bucket there. We're in this crash data analysis period where we're taking all of the reported crash data, crunching the numbers, and starting to put all of that together. As we finish that up over the next month or two, then we'll start to look at, okay, based on what types of crashes we're seeing, what sort of improvements can we start to suggest to address those specific crash types? And we'll be creating some toolboxes for all the member communities to, to use, just as another resource in their work and things. And then, like I mentioned before, the real goal is to get through the process, get the plan completed, so that hopefully next year, we can see which one of these projects in the region are kind of floating to the top, and then go apply for some, apply for some funding to help, you know, get some improvements made. Last couple slides here. So as we're finishing up this data collection, what we would really like to do is to ask you, you know, to participate, and anybody in town to participate, because, you know, we've got our, our crash data, and that's really a reported crash, you know, through law enforcement. So we have that data set, but it's also, we'd really like to hear, you know, are there any sort of, you know, near misses you've been involved in? Or as you're driving around the metro, you know, how, what do you feel like there's some opportunities for improvements and things like that? So that sort of feedback's really important to us, too. And so we've created a website, and the, the website address is there on the bottom. There's a QR code there also. And there's more information, kind of what I went through briefly here, that's on that website. But most importantly, for what we're talking about today, you can click on this interactive map, and there's these four categories on the right that we've got listed. So if you've got a specific spot where you want to provide us a comment, you can pick one of these four categories, drop a pin on the map, and then give us a specific comment. And then we'll be able to take that and add that to our overall data set. So that's really all I had. Just wanted to, to give everybody an update, and, you know, happy to answer any questions at this point, too.
Thank you for the presentation. I think this is extremely important work that you're doing. And, you know, I look forward to seeing and hearing more about it. Just a couple quick questions that I have. You, maybe this is a dumb question. You mentioned that nearly half of all the accidents involved males. Is that one of the stats you gave?
Almost 70%.
Oh, 70? Wow, okay, that high. Okay, now we know why the insurance rates are the way they are, right? For men versus women. Okay, then the next question I had is, so after we do the study, then we apply for the federal funding. Is there a match for the federal funding? Where does the match come from?
So there, yeah, there would be a match, kind of similar to any other sort of federal funding. And another thing that we're, that we're doing there, too, is we're, we're going to identify, you know, what, what's kind of floating to the top as a region. We know that, you know, we, we know that the engineering department here is actively looking for, you know, safety improvements all the time also. So, you know, that's be a part of this, too, is making sure that we understand what you've been thinking about for projects and improvements and things like that. And then hopefully, you know, that, that funding can sort of supplement or fit in to some of the plans you're already thinking about, too.
Yeah, I mean, we've got two traffic engineers that are looking at this kind of stuff all the time. So I guess, are we going to know then to the, you know, what, what the most unsafe intersections are in the metro and, and how many of the accidents happen in Des Moines versus West Des Moines versus all of that information we're going to have?
Yeah, so, so we'll end up with this high-injury network map, essentially. So it'll be a map of the whole metro, and it'll show where the hotspots are all, all across the, you know, all across the region.
Okay, and then where does the matching, I, I don't know what kind of match will be required, but where does that money come from? Does that come from money that we already contribute to the MPO on the per capita amount? Or is that, where, where does that matching money come from? Because I guess what I'm getting at is we're already doing this ourselves.
Sure.
Does it make sense for us to participate in the region and then have, I mean, if a lot of the money is going to go to non-West Des Moines projects for improvements, I guess that's what I'm getting at.
So it, we don't know yet what the priorities of this particular, you know, region will show, but I would just think of it as, you know, it's like another opportunity for an 80% federal match program. 80% federal match program. So, you know, say several projects show up in West Des Moines. Now you can maybe choose from this one in addition to, you know, another funding program you may, may have been thinking about also.
Okay, okay. Well, we certainly want to be team players and want to participate how we can, so I appreciate it. Councilman Hardman.
Oh, I'm, I'm looking at, this is the annual report for 2023 through 2024. Or this, is this an annual report?
Or is it, yeah.
I'm not sure what that...
Oh, okay, this is the handout here.
That's a state deals.
Yeah.
Okay, that's a general.
Oh, okay, all right. So what, what does it mean here on the back? It has benefit ratio, 27, we're 27. I, I don't understand the benefit ratio, 27, 38.
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't think I've seen that.
I think that's what they have to do.
It's from what we pay in dues versus what we receive in grant awards.
Okay, okay.
So it's a grant awards over what we paid in dues, that's the ratio.
Okay, all right. Okay. Okay, that, I, I needed to understand a little bit about the ratio, so.
Okay, any other questions? All right, well, thank you again for the work you're doing.
Quick, I got one, I got one quick one, Your Honor. Is the data set available to the public?
It is, it's Iowa DOT data, so it's a big, it's a big burly data set. But in general, yes, it's out there.
Is it on the website of the?
The public website.
MPO?
Of all the DOT data. And I could, I could share that with you.
No, I'm, I'm thinking like, one of the best ways to find needles in a haystack is to set these things open to the public and let the public explore the data in a way. And I'm guessing that DOT's data is probably not easy to work with, so.
That's what we're really hoping with this interactive map.
Yeah.
Too, is just to hear.
Yeah, but the interactive map doesn't give you the insights you need if you actually had the raw data set to crunch. So, sorry, I don't mean to divest.
But at least it will allow somebody that has traveled a certain segment of road, that thing they think is very dangerous to say, hey, I've had a lot of near, near misses here and take a look at this area, you know, then you can look at the data maybe.
Is that an interactive map that, can you go back one slide really quick?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Is, is this the interactive map that you're talking about? Or is it, because this is more user experience rather than?
So these are comments people have already provided.
Okay.
So if you go to that website and click on the map, you can see what other folks have put on there for comments too, and then add, and then add your own if you'd like also.
If you go to 57th Court NEP Tru's corner that my kids come on, that's probably a near miss one a lot. Two teenage drivers.
Well, the other one that I would say, the other one I would say is the West Mixback Master. I mean, where people are, you know, converging from, you know, I-35, 80, 235, whatever. It, it's, that one is tough. People are getting, getting over onto I-35, people are trying to get over onto I-235. And I know the DOT has taken a look at, at redoing that, that interchange. But my understanding is that, you know, we've got to work and lobby to be able to get the funds to have that project happen. And I'm not sure if that's starting to get a little derailed or what, but that, that's a big one for us, you know, personally.
I think, Russ, that, Mayor, that is on track to begin moving forward in maybe 2026.
Okay.
Timeframe, so a couple of years out. They got to do the East Mixmaster first, they're going to, I think, get that largely complete and then focus on the West Mixmaster.
Awesome, thank you, appreciate it, man. All right, well, thank you so much, appreciate you being here and we look forward to participating however we can.
Thank you very much.
All right, take care. Okay, moving on, Mayor, Council, City Manager Report. I will start down to my right with City Manager Tom Haddon.
Your report, Your Honor.
Short and sweet, thank you, Tom. Okay, Councilman Hudson.
Just a real quick shout out to Ryan and the Parks and Rec staff and to the Chamber and all of the partners to make the Raccoon River Palooza just a magnificent event. Tons of people came out for it and it's just great to see that the event was, I would say, a great success and it's also nice to see the parks are full, rec season's in full swing, everybody's enjoying the outdoors and what a great place to be in the city of West Des Moines. Also, I know she's not here right now, but I do believe this is the last council meeting before Althea Holcomb resigns, not resigns, retires, excuse me. I think, I think July 1, is that her date?
No, it's July 17.
Okay, so it's a little bit, we have one more?
She was the.
Okay, if she, okay. I, I was, I was under impression it was July 1 rather than mid-July, so I will hold off on some words, but they were certainly warm words and of appreciation, which I'm sure all of us would like to give as well, so my mistake. That's the end of my report, Your Honor.
All right, thank you, Councilman. Councilman McKinney.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, a couple of items that I would just want to highlight for, for everybody. We had a Bravo Board Meeting last week and I think the folks on the council here received an email from Ryan, but, or, or you will, I should say. But Bravo has awarded a new public art grant for the city of West Des Moines specifically for Legacy Woods in the amount of $50,000. And so I just thank you to Ryan and his team for the work that they've done to, to apply and obviously to Bravo for the approval. And, you know, as we look at the MPO and the benefit ratio here, I don't have the benefit ratio in front of me as it relates to Bravo, but it's great to see some of those hotel motel dollars find their way back to the city of West Des Moines specifically as it relates to the Legacy Woods project. We also had a MAC meeting last week and for those of you that follow the Taxpayers Association of Central Iowa and some other sources, they did a report on this MAC meeting. It was a strategy meeting, it was about a two-hour strategy meeting we held in Urbandale. And I want to, you know, specifically thank Councilman Coleman from the city of Des Moines, who, you know, really put together this strategy session. And the idea is trying to better understand how cities across the metro can work together to move forward agendas. There were a lot of discussions about property taxes and some legislation the legislature passed as well as stormwater issues and siding. And so just want you to know that these member communities of the MAC are coming together to try to find ways to, you know, be more, as the mayor likes to say, efficient and effective. Speaking of the mayor, Mayor, I also want to recognize you for the, the condition of the city, the state of our city, address that you had at the West Des Moines Chambers Annual Meeting last, last week, last Thursday. And if you happen to miss it, it's, I, I'm hopeful that there was some sort of YouTube capture of it because you really hit a ton of amazing things that, that this city is doing, that our terrific staff is moving things forward. And so just a shout out to you for an excellent recap of the state of our city. And you said, you know, the state of our city is strong many times and, and it is. At that same meeting, Brian Hemiseth, Ryan Moffett, Ryan Penning and Althea Holcomb were also present and gave a very good update as to what we're doing in each of those departments. And then the last thing, I know I'm going on, Mayor, and I apologize, but there, there was a lot that happens to our last meeting. I just want to give a, a quick shout out to Fire Marshal Whitzel, Chief Lou, Building Inspector Dennis Patrick, Tom Haddon, you, Jessica and Greta for the work that you do behind the scenes, not just on some recent projects, but, you know, off hours, late nights, over weekend, to ensure that this city moves at the speed of business as it relates to economic development projects. And even if the speed of business is actually moving slower than the city, we're there and it's recognized and I appreciate it and, and it's important for our community. So just a shout out to the work that you, you do and you have done, so thank you.
Well, and I would just give a shout out to you and the council for all the work that you guys do on off hours as well, because you're working with these guys in those situations. And I know that we have oftentimes things come up and nights and weekends where we've got issues and staff is, is working hard off hours, which is just unbelievable to try to resolve issues. And, and I know you guys are, are doing the same thing. Councilman, you were working hard to, to try to make sure that everything moved forward on, on one of the projects that we've got going on. And I, I think we've got a, a good solution and things are moving forward on that project. But I know you spent a lot of time on your own personal time to, to make sure that moved forward. And thank you for the, for the kudos too on the, on the state of the city. Our, our city is extremely strong and it is strong because of the people that we have that are, that are working here. We've got unbelievable staff, I would put them against anybody, not only in the metro, but in this nation. We've got the most unbelievable council team, city manager, deputy city manager, city attorney, we have just got an unbelievable team of people. We've got the best Chamber of Commerce that literally are one of the best chambers of commerce in the nation and that was evident by them being finalists for that award. We've got dedicated business leaders and residents that, that care so much about the city that they want to volunteer their, their time, their money to, they serve on boards and commissions and they do so much to make our city what it is. And so really the state of the city address kind of wrote itself, but we've got just a lot of great momentum going on in the city of West Des Moines and we're going to continue to carry that forward. We're going to continue to work to cut the property taxes whenever possible. We just did that with this upcoming budget, five cents per thousand, we're very proud of that. Keep working on affordable housing and all the different things that we're doing here, the quality of life amenities through Parks and Rec, you name it, we've got just a great thing going. One thing that I would mention, wearing my other hat when it comes to being the Chair of DART, you all should have received a survey, I think some of you filled that out. We are trying to come up with a way to be even more efficient and effective than we are currently operating at, at DART. And we're going to be doing a study coming up to try to figure out if there's a, a different business model that we can use, whether it's using microtransit or, you know, looking at the routes that we have, what if we scrapped the system and started over? It's going to be a comprehensive study and the survey's going out to all council people, city managers, for your honest feedback on what you think of DART and how we could work to improve and be better and what we should look at during this study. That study, that, that survey that was sent out to you is due sometime this week. So if, if you don't have that, let me know and I will get you another copy. But we really, I, I want to make sure especially that we are capturing the sentiments of West Des Moines and through your eyes and what you think of DART and what the improvements need to be, so please take a look at that. With that, I will move on to Councilwoman Hardman.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it. I do have a couple of things I want to lift up. And Councilman Hudson and I attended a public safety meeting just last Friday and lots of things going on in those areas too. I wanted to share that, of course, the construction is fully, 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 almost at completion, I think, of the 27th. Everything will be done, I'm looking at the chief, he's kind of nodding his head, so that seems to be an affirmation that here, coming up very, very soon, we'll have pretty much everything completed. It's been a long project, I think it's gone well, so excited, I'm sure they're excited to have that in the rearview mirror. We also talked about what was going on in WestCom. WestCom is, they, they had a computer and dispatch upgrade that went live on June 12th, so that went well and so appreciate the work that is, anytime you have upgrades and updates, I think you all know, it doesn't happen through osmosis, takes a lot of time and a lot of people to try to make that happen. We were given just some notice here that the police record management system, which is a software system, will have to be upgraded by December 2025. Massive, massive project with a price tag associated with it, but we can't go without it. So I appreciate just kind of getting some advanced notification of what that is involved. I'd like to also indicate that there are a lot of partnerships that West Des Moines says yes to, and one of them most recently was the Half Mile, Half Ironman Triathlon, something I'll probably never ever be able to do, but nevertheless, it goes through West Des Moines. I think the bike portion went through West Des Moines. And while that's great and I love it and I think it's good for our city, it comes with a price tag, it comes with a cost of time and staff time. I think the chief indicated that they were going to have to have eight extra EMS staff people to be there on site, because we know that can be dangerous when you're talking about people that exerting that kind of energy and the weather that they probably had to endure, things happen. And I just would like to recognize the team that works the overtime, come in after hour, after hour, after hour to make that happen. And I just think there was some healthy discussion about we're not going to be everything to everybody and at some point in time, it, it takes a toll on the kind of hours that these men and women have to give up to do it, not that they're complaining, but we have to evaluate that based on capacity. And so there was just some really good discussions around that. I think Councilman Hudson lifted up the notion of understanding more about false alarms and what is that costing? And, you know, I think the first three are free, the fourth is $50, the fifth is 100. So Councilman Hudson is not picking on his fellow Councilman McKinney about false alarms, but really wanting people to pay their fair share for the resources that are expended. So they're going to do a study, we like to make decisions on data. And so McKinney, we're giving you a little bit of forewarning. Okay, okay.
And that wasn't a false alarm, he burned cookies.
Yeah, yeah. So that, those are some things that happened in public safety. I, I do think we're coming down the pike to talk about this amendment change here that deals with unlimited servings of alcohol during times on Sunday when there's brunches and whatnot. So there's going to be some language that kind of clears up practice and will allow that in some times between 8:00 and 3:00 on Sunday and between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 3:00 o'clock on weekday or Saturdays, because those are kind of the times where places that have brunches, you know, they'll, you, you, you pay a certain flat amount and you get as many mimosas as you want. So we're, we're trying to be reasonable, but we're also trying to make sure that, you know, it's kind of limited, so.
Mimosa lovers, mimosa lovers should really enjoy tonight's city council meeting, just so you know.
I also would like to lift up Mike Whitzel, who, I want to give a shout, I was sitting at home, I'd been traveling quite a bit, sitting at home and there it is, you, you see him on the news quite frequently, but yet I was watching that, you know, the fire department saved a life on our highway, they were just happened to be in the area. And, you know, if it weren't for their timely response, this person could have died because the car could have blown up because there was an oxygen tank there. So it really, really touches your heart when you're just kind of just randomly watching TV, which I don't watch a lot of TV, but when you do, you see our West Des Moines people out there doing their jobs, doing it well and looked upon as a resource in how we go about doing stuff. So I just want to say to Mike Whitzel, thank you, thank you, thank you, you always represent us well, you always give best interviews, they're always authentic, they come from the heart and we really appreciate that. And then lastly, I need to lift up the work of Audrey Kinnis, who I know is ill tonight, but is always looking at ways in which we can elevate the work we do in diversity, equity and inclusion. And I don't consider those bad words, I consider it important because we are, we are a city that promotes a sense of belonging. So there is a walk tomorrow, it's going to be hot, I wish you would have chosen a more cooler day, that is honoring Juneteenth. And I see the general chairperson, Duwana Bradley, who is a dear friend and a sorority sister who has done a remarkable job of all the Juneteenth activities. I was there on Saturday, Brad, I saw you and we sat there and we talked a bit. It was just people after people after people after people and all the connections. I think I posted about 27 pictures of all different people that I had conversations with, but it was quite a celebration, so I want to thank you, Duwana, for lifting up Juneteenth. But I also want to thank Audrey for trying to find a clever way that we can honor it in West Des Moines. There's a walk around this pond, I think the mayor is going to be also reading the proclamation again, and then I'm going to say a few remarks and we're going to walk. But I want to say before I close my remarks is that Juneteenth is an opportunity for us to reflect upon our history. And I was sharing with Brad just on Saturday when we ran into each other, because I want to be able to speak truth to why this holiday is, it's just not Juneteenth, but it's about freedom, it's about freedom and it's about the sacrifices that so many paid, paid. And as I was looking up what I should say, I shared with him a flyer. And it kind of makes me cry to even see this flyer. And the flyer I wish I could show, it says Negroes for Sale, okay? Negroes for Sale. And it talked about the men that were for sale, it talked about the women that were for sale with insurance, meaning they've got a child that will be born and maybe that'll be extra help. And it talked about girls that were for sale and it talked about Negroes for Sale. So we have come a long ways, but I would be remiss if I wasn't sitting in this seat as an African American and expressing how it feels to celebrate this holiday and it's about freedom and it's about what is in our history, right, wrong or indifferent, and it's all there as proof. You can, there's, there's 40, 50 more of these flyers out there in different cities that talked about people for sale. And so I'm honored that we are celebrating Juneteenth, I'm honored that there is a walk and I'm honored there's an annual celebration and I'm honored that there's a Duwana Bradley that wants to lift that up every year. So looking forward to walking in the hot weather tomorrow, but compared to what my ancestors went through, that's pretty mild. So that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Loetz.
Lots of comments tonight, I'll keep mine brief. Excited to see Legacy Woods moving forward. A lot of you might know who follow this, I'm very, very passionate about that property, so excited for that to come on the agenda, thanks.
All right, thank you, Councilman. With that, we will move on to item four, Consent Agenda. Are there any items that any council person would like to have polled and voted on separately? Otherwise, I would take a motion to approve the consent agenda as distributed. Otherwise, I would take a motion to approve the consent agenda as distributed.
Are we going to pull the proclamation?
We're pulling the proclamation.
Okay, thank you.
So we will pull for the record, four.
Y.
Last one, four Y.
Motion for the remainder.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Oops, sorry.
Four yes.
Okay. Item four Y is a proclamation for honoring Juneteenth Day, June 19th, 2024. Can I get a motion to approve the proclamation?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. I'm going to read, and then we'll invite anybody here that would like to take a picture with us down front to come down front and take a picture after this has been approved. Whereas the City of West Des Moines commemorates Juneteenth, an annual holiday commemorating the end of slavery in the United States. This day has been celebrated by many Americans since the late 1800s and has served as historical milestone, symbolizing our nation's commitment to end slavery and embrace our constitutional decree of freedom and justice for all. And whereas on January 1st, 1863, President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation, declaring that, quote, "All persons held as slaves within the rebellious states are and henceforth shall be free," end quote. It took more than two years before the news reached 250,000 enslaved people living in Texas, when on June 19th, 1865, General Gordon Granger and his regiment arrived in Galveston, Texas to inform the last enslaved people of their freedom. And whereas Juneteenth is the oldest nationally celebrated holiday commemorating the ending of slavery, it is an opportunity for us to join our nation in honoring the resiliency, fortitude, and hard-fought freedoms of African Americans. And whereas the City of West Des Moines stands with our African American community in recognizing the historical significance of Juneteenth, on Tuesday, June 18th, at noon, the City of West Des Moines Black Employee Resource Group, the BIRG, will host an educational program and commemorate two and a half lap walk around the Jamie Hurd Amphitheater to honor the resilience and contributions of African Americans locally and nationally. And now, therefore, I, Russ Trimble, Mayor of the City of West Des Moines, Iowa, do hereby declare Wednesday, June 19th, 2024, as Juneteenth. And I call upon the residents of West Des Moines to celebrate the significance of our shared national history and commitment to justice and freedom. Signed the 17th day of June 2024. And I would really encourage any West Des Moines residents to join us tomorrow at noon for the program and for the reading of the proclamation and for taking the two and a half laps around the campus. So with that, I would open it up to any discussion, if there is any. Otherwise, please vote, and I hope to see everybody tomorrow.
For yes.
Okay. Anybody here that would like to join us down front for a picture? We'd be happy to have you down here. Item 5A, Village of Jordan Creek, PUD, southwest corner of Jordan Creek Parkway and Ashworth Road. Amend parcel A within the Village of Jordan Creek Planned Unit Development Ordinance to modify square foot footage allowances for restaurants and commercial uses and associated parking requirements. CRG Residential. We've got ordinance, ordinance amendment to the planned unit development for approval of the second reading. There are no outstanding issues and no changes from the first reading, which was approved three to one to one, with Councilman Trevillian voting no and Councilman Hudson abstaining.
Move consideration of the second reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
Three yes, one abstention. An ordinance amended city code of the City of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2024, and ordinance number 2445 and 2476 pertaining to planned unit development district regulations and guidelines.
Move approval of the second reading.
Second.
Please vote.
Three yes, one abstention.
Okay. Item 5B, Valley West Mall, 1551 Valley West Drive. Amend comprehensive planned land use map to designate multi-use high land use and establish the Valley West Mall Planned Unit Development Ordinance to provide for the redevelopment of the property, Valley West Mall LLC. We've got an ordinance for approval of the second reading, waiver of the third reading and adoption in final form. There are no outstanding issues and no changes from the previous reading, which was adopted unanimously at our last meeting with Councilwoman Hardman, absent. Does somebody want to move consideration of the second reading?
Move consideration of the second reading.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
Four yes. North's amendment, official zoning map in the city code of the City of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2024, by amending Title IX zoning, Chapter IX planned unit development district pertaining to PUD district regulations and guidelines.
Move approval of the second reading.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Move to waive the third reading and adopt in final form.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
For yes.
Okay. Item six, public hearings. Item 6A, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider forest place, southwest corner Stagecoach Drive and South 81st Street. Amend the zoning map to establish single-family residential R1 zoning initiated by High Point Group LLC. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice is published?
May 31st, 2024, in the Des Moines Register.
And have we received any written comments of this hearing?
The Planted Zoning Commission, by a vote of six yes with one absent, adopted a resolution recommending approval of the rezoning request.
Okay. Anybody from the audience who would like to address the council on item 6A, please come to the podium, give us your name and address for the record. Anybody online, please hit star six and do the same. Is there anybody in the chamber or online that would like to address the council on Okay, hearing and seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We've got an ordinance amendment for approval of the first reading. There are no outstanding issues, but there are two conditions of approval. One related to the developer acknowledging the requirement to build out the street network for the development and also getting the fire marshal approval to start above-ground construction based on access and accessibility of water. And two, the developer acknowledging and ensuring that garages and driveways off of South 81st Street are constructed in such a way that the homeowner pulls forward onto South 81st Street as they are prohibited from backing onto South 81st Street.
Motion to accept the first reading.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, please vote.
For yes. North's amendment, official zoning map of the City of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2024, by amending Title IX zoning, Chapter IV zoning districts and maps. Motion to approve the first reading.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
For yes.
Okay. Item 6B, we are being asked to defer to the July 1st meeting. Can I get a motion?
Motion to continue.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
For yes.
Okay. Item 6C, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider revenue purpose statement regarding the use of revenues from proposed electric franchise fee initiated by the City of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice is published?
May 31st, 2024, in the Des Moines Register.
Have we received any written comment to this hearing?
None, Your Honor.
Okay. Anybody in the audience who would like to address the council on item 6C, please come to the podium, give us your name and address for the record. Anybody online, please hit star six to unmute yourself and do the same. Is there anybody either online or in the chamber that would like to address the council on item 6C? Okay. Hearing and seeing no one, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed. We've got a resolution adopting the revenue purpose statement regarding the use of revenues derived from an electric franchise fee. There are no outstanding issues, and this was approved unanimously by the Finance and Administration City Council Subcommittee. I would also like to note several different items, since I believe people may misinterpret what we are doing here. First, we currently have a 1% local option sales tax applied to your utility bill. These actions here tonight essentially repeal that 1% sales tax and replace it with a 1% franchise fee. So this, for residents and businesses, this is nothing but a swap. You will see no increase on your utility bill, none. Two, this is smart governance. Why, you ask? We generate approximately $20 million overall through the local option sales tax, but we only get to retain about $14 million of that, or 70%. 30% of what we generate through loss due to an antiquated formula for the distribution of lost funds has us losing 30% of what we're generating. So it makes sense to replace this 1% lost with a 1% franchise fee. Three, while the revenue purpose statement doesn't allow us to use this money to reduce property taxes, guess what? This will allow us to keep more of the money that we generate in taxes to pay for services currently being paid for out of the general fund, thereby freeing up general fund money to provide more property tax relief for our residents, should it be responsible to do Additionally, when I got elected to council, we had a city levy rate of $12.05 per thousand. After this last budget, we are now going to be down to $10.85 per thousand. I am proud, as I know the council is, on the work that we've done to reduce property taxes whenever it's been responsible to do so. We will continue to work at that, as I said in my opening comments of this meeting. Last but not least, what I just outlined should tell you why we're doing this. This is smart and it benefits our taxpayers, who will see no change to their utility bill. And frankly, this is long overdue. We should have done this several years ago. This has nothing to do with any changes made up at the Iowa Legislature, with any legislation that they have enacted regarding property taxes. This is simply smart government. With that, does somebody want to move approval of the resolution?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, it should also be said that other cities in the metropolitan area already have this, correct?
That is correct. A number of them have 5%, 4%, 3%. I think this will be the lowest of anybody that has a franchise fee in place. And like I said, it's just smart governance. If we're going to lose 30% of the local option sales tax applied to your utility bill and have that going elsewhere around the metro, why would we not keep 100% of the funds, which is what we're going to do with this franchise fee? It's just good governance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Your Honor, I appreciate the effort you put forth to make this change. Keep that money at home where it's generated, and that's, you know, I think, just, just plain smart. So thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
For yes.
Okay. Item 6D, this is the time and the place for a public hearing to consider revenue purpose statement regarding the use of revenues for a proposed natural gas franchise fee initiated by the City of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
May 31st, 2024, in the Des Moines Register.
And have we received any written comments of this hearing?
None, Your Honor.
Okay. Anybody from in the audience who would like to address the council on item 6D, please come to the podium, give us your name and address for the record. Anybody online, please hit star six to unmute yourself and do the same. Is there anybody either in the chamber or online that would like to address the council on item 6D? Okay, sorry for the awkward pause, but I'm trying to give people time to unmute themselves. Hearing and seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We have got a resolution for adoption of revenue purpose statement regarding the use of revenues derived from a natural gas franchise fee. There are no outstanding issues, and this was also approved unanimously by the Finance Administration City Council Subcommittee.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, please vote.
For yes.
Okay. Item 6E, this is the time and the place for a public hearing to consider electric energy. Amendment to the franchise agreement expiring June 30th, 2038, initiated by Mid-American Energy Company. This is continued from May 20th, 2024 meeting. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice is published?
May 10th, 2024, in the Des Moines Register.
And have we received any public comments, any written comments of this hearing?
None, Your Honor.
Okay. Anybody in the audience who would like to address the council on item 6E, please come to the podium, give us your name and address for the record. Anybody online, hit star six to unmute yourself and do the same. Is there anybody either online or in the chamber that would like to address the council on item 6E? Okay, I will declare the public hearing closed, and we've got an ordinance amendment adopting an electric franchise agreement with Mid-American Energy Company, putting in place the 1% franchise fee for a period not to exceed 25 years, and there are no outstanding issues.
Motion to approve.
Oh, motion to consider the first reading.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
For yes. North's amendment, ordinance number 2319 in the municipal code of the City of West Des Moines, by extending the period of the franchise from 20 years from the effective date of the ordinance to 25 years from that date, and by authorizing the city to collect a franchise fee for the remainder of the franchise period. Motion to approve the first reading.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
For yes.
Okay. Item 6F, this is the time and the place for a public hearing to consider natural gas, amendment to the franchise agreement expiring June 30th, 2038, initiated by Mid-American Energy Company. Also continued from May 20th, 2024 meeting. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice is published?
May 10th, 2024, in the Des Moines Register.
And have we received any written comments of this hearing?
None, Your Honor.
Okay. Anybody from the audience who would like to address the council on item 6F, please come to the podium, give us your name and address for the record. Anybody online, hit star six to unmute yourself and do the same. Is there anybody either in the chamber or online that would like to address the council on item 6F? Okay, hearing and seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We've got an ordinance amendment adopting a natural gas franchise agreement with Mid-American Energy Company, putting in place a 1% franchise fee for a period not to exceed 25 years, and there are no outstanding issues.
Motion to consider the first reading.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, please vote.
For yes. North's amendment, ordinance number 2320 in the municipal code of the City of West Des Moines, by extending the period of the franchise from 20 years from the effective date of the ordinance to 25 years from that date, and by authorizing the city to collect a franchise fee for the remainder of the franchise period.
Motion to approve the first reading.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
For yes.
Okay. Item seven, new business. Item 7A, Legacy Woods, 2280 Grand Avenue, accept a master plan for the development of property, City of West Des Moines Parks and Recreation Department. We've got a resolution for acceptance of master plan for Legacy Woods project. There are no outstanding issues, and this was approved unanimously by the Development and Planning City Council Subcommittee, as well as planning and zoning at their last meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there anybody in the audience or online that would like to address the council on this item? Is there any discussion on the dais?
You know, I meant a comment earlier, but like, after listening to Councilwoman Hardman's comments on Juneteenth and whatnot, like, there's so much history on this property. It's a long time we cleaned it up and give it the attention it's due, and I'm very thankful for the private donors who have helped along these lines. And I'm just really excited for this to start the transformation process.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilman Lotes. I appreciate that. I am too, is equally excited. You know, we have right in our own backyard here, the legacy of the Jordan House and what it means and to have it in West Des Moines, and then to have this kind of master plan that surrounds it that I think only uplifts it. It's heartwarming, so I, I'm excited.